Okay.
Good morning, everyone. It's the group two on Tuesday, May 4th, 2021. This is the regular meeting in town in which this is our first hybrid meeting. Boards and commissions that are small will begin. Should I go back into in-person meetings? This is decided to be hybrid, so we use the methodology of which this paper probably don't appear personally, and we have the opportunity to press and keep others to public view. So we're not very sure how this is going to go this Thursday. How's it going so far?
Comes up. No complaints?
So we have a form for the seat day and Kathleen personally who wants to class. So it's good to be with everyone, the staff. First item on our agenda is the minutes for our primary meeting on April 20th. How much are corrections for the minutes?
None.
I move your improvements for April 20th, 2021. Second?
Second.
Second, all clear?
Yeah, maybe.
First, we'll say aye, aye. Public comments. Members of the public are welcome by comments to board selectmen on agenda topics scheduled for review and a vote. You may submit comments by email to the email address vigo distribution at cncp dot com. Watch your comments. If you were there in person, I don't see the page numbers on public. Which, so we will back any cops that want to email. So the first third item on our agenda is board indication, improvement, technology lease and I can join key for the school district to present the work of the board. Morning, Joanna.
Morning. Oops. Good morning. Nice to see everyone. I didn't realize you were doing the the hybrid today. I would have stopped by to present this. So this is the annual technology lease that we have each year. And oops. Am I muted?
No, you're good.
Okay. So it's the annual technology lease that we have each year that goes through the budget process. It's $600,000 worth of spend and it's paid off over a four-year period. In the budget book on page 123 is a listing of our purchasing plan for next year, which we've already started to look into procurement. Technology over the last few years has been very difficult, especially this past year with such a backlog of orators for all the school districts, not just here in Connecticut, but across the country. At any rate, we've had this lease for seven or eight years now, and it's served the district and the town very well. It keeps us current with our technology and it basically has been a flat expenditure at 600,000 throughout that period of time. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Catherine?
Joanna, thank you for this. Nice to see you. I just from the what the documents that we received, which is the invitation to bid and anything only, and it does list the purchasing plan that you mentioned. Just curious, if this list may be about 10 or so items, in general, is that replacing a quarter of what our inventory is in terms of, for instance, IMAX or some of the equipment here? Just want to get a ballpark figure in terms of now.
Yeah, it's it is about a 25% replacement on the end user equipment. On the Promethium boards, that's a 10-year cycle. Those are like the old smart boards. They're being replaced with something newer. The network refreshes five to seven years. So it depends on what we're purchasing, but the end units, we look to get four years out of.
Thank you very much.
Joanna, you can remind me, is this capex or is this software?
This is it's a capital lease. So it goes through the capital budget.
I have no further questions, so I move to approve this discussion to execute the lease agreement required before this is taken. Second, you have the instruction. All favor.
Aye.
I should have a second, Joanna?
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
Number four, fire commission promotion. We are where Chairman Jack Horner invited him to his home or office for chat.
Jack is here. There he is.
Good morning.
Nope, you muted, Jeff. Yes, I'm muted, so.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. We are here to request the Board of Selectmen's approval for the promotion to lieutenant from firefighter for Kevin J. Vetti. A quick outline of the process. Lieutenant Viti spelled differently and unrelated retired in November of 2020. Then with the help of human resources and department management, including Chief Hennessy, we set up as the CBA requires an assessment center and a schedule is produced in December of 2020, at which point training materials were distributed to eligible and those who elected to take the test candidates. The assessment center tests and exercises took place on March 15th and 16th of this year. There were five candidates. Three candidates passed the assessment center and the scores are received by ourselves, the commission at the end of March. We did an interview of the three candidates who had passed all of the sectors of the assessment center. They had earned theirselves a seat at the table, as we say, and we voted unanimously, although it was difficult, you voted unanimously to promote Kevin Vetti to lieutenant. All three candidates are highly qualified and we have, as we believe is good management practice, we will meet with all three of the final candidates at our next commission meeting to discuss where we believe their strengths are, where we believe they may need some extra work and to help them, especially in the future when new openings occur for officer level. And so we would like to request that you approve our promotion of Kevin Vetti to lieutenant. Just as an aside, Kevin has been with us for 16 years. Prior to that, he was a firefighter and an officer in the Turner River as a volunteer, and he has a strong character and we have full faith in Kevin. Thank you.
Jack, any questions? I had the pleasure of meeting Kevin last week. Nice to meet you. And say, yeah, maybe you're a baby on the way. Kind of baby, my girl.
Yes, he did.
Oh, this is a happy question, and I'm glad to make motion to approve Kevin Betty to run into the rank lieutenant in the fire department.
Second.
Scott?
None here. Congratulations to Kevin.
All favor back.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is Tiger and Bill Wolfsman are here to present the nature center visitors center group statement.
Uh, housing authority.
Oh, I'm sorry, Tiger. Scott, you're a pet politician. This is all the authority for the affordable housing trust.
After the great job that Department of Public Works and Tigers did out on that job on West Road and getting that bridge knocked out so quick, I'd be happy to yield my time, but it'd be awesome out there. So let's see, for housing authority, we're coming forward in order to draw from the housing authority fund in order to handle improvements to improvement slash mandatory maintenance to the Milport project. With Milport, when we had originally done the project back in in 2008, we really stretched every last dollar to be able to make it even conceivably possible. And one of the choices we had made was to use electric heat pumps for all of the heating units. Those pumps have now passed their serviceable life and they have all they're all basically in the process of failing. Of course, gas has come to the neighborhood too, so luckily one of those is actually failing. We have a chance to really upgrade our equipment, get far better equipment with that utilizes gas, which will make it much easier for our tenants to cover their their heating bills. So the purpose of this is to go ahead and fund that gas conversion and it also, which comes to roughly around 400,000, $450,000 in total. We're asking for the amount of money inside of the fund right now and we have spent, sorry, I just lost my note under this, but I think we've spent somewhere in the neighborhood of over 200,000 so far, which has drained a lot of the reserves from housing authority.
Questions for the board?
No, no, Scott, just an update. We currently have in the trust fund about 360,000 available. You approved a 50,000 drawdown that has been acted upon, and so with the 350 total to 350.
Brings the total to?
350 authorization for this purpose, for this purpose. So Scott, the gas lines go right up to the all of the?
Correct. So there are almost, I mean, there's still a last connection we've got to do to the big Milport buildings. There's Mill and Milport. We have the apartments and then you have the the, sorry, you have the townhouses, then you have the apartments. The apartments are set up to go ahead and do a conversion in the near future too, but right now we're concentrating on the actual townhouses and the gas does go into the neighborhood and we are running it to each of the buildings as permitted and as we're able to.
When do you expect the project to be completed?
It varies a little bit just because especially with COVID, we have some tenants who are nervous about having people do have work done in their inside of their homes. I mean, I'd imagine for the townhouses will probably be done within about the next month. Might be a little bit optimistic, but sometime around then. And then we're still trying to look for what's the best time to go ahead and convert the apartments. Obviously, it's best to do it during a shoulder season like what we have right now because we certainly have to interrupt heat and cooling in order to do the actual conversion.
And while we've got you, how are things going on 123?
It's going great. It's a, you know, you never like to say any of this stuff, but as of this moment, things are going great. We'll see what happens today, but it's moving along very nicely. AP is doing a great job in construction. Heritage Housing, who else manage it for us is doing well. You know, the boards with New Canaan Neighborhoods and Canaan Parish are working nicely together and we should be able to get those houses online hopefully by, you know, by the new school year, which will be great for the tenants because it, once we finish phase one, then we get to move all of the prior residents of prior slash current residents of Canaan Parish get to occupy building number one. And it's really coming out so far. I mean, just floor plans, it's so much better than we could have hoped. I mean, you walk through this building and you look out through the windows and see the views and you realize how much green space is going to come into play and it's really just spectacular. So we're all really excited.
That's that's fantastic. Thank you.
Thank you, Scott.
Can I just have a more question, Alinda? So so in terms of the total that's currently in the fund, the trust fund, after this amount goes out, will be, can I get the amount right about this?
Well, no, because there's 360 now. There was 15. That's already.
So there'll be only 10 left.
So we only 10 left and then it gets replenished.
Do we have an expectation of how the how the trust might grow in the next six months?
Of the last couple of years, when I looked at this, we bring in roughly 350, 400 a year.
Okay.
Into the trust. So far, we've since since we implemented this, we've brought in and distributed about 4.8.
4.8 since we started. Yeah, okay. So about 350.
About 350, 400.
Okay. Thank you.
So I will move to approve your question, the housing authority for $300,000 for the trust fund for cash conversion costs at all departments.
Second.
Take seconds for the discussion. All favor. Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Anna. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you all very much. Greatly appreciate the support.
Now, Tiger. I'm sorry. Good morning. Thanks for having me. You noticed a new Tiger. 20 years ago. Yeah. So for the business center, the nature center, we've been experiencing some issues with the roof itself. Ever since about 2013, 2014, we did some boost of the name 2016, '17, we did some, there's some cables. There is a roofing structure that you tighten on a turnbuckle. We're at the point where we can't tighten those turnbuckles anymore and we're still feeling that the group itself needs to be stiffened or structurally improved. So we went out, we had this engineer, we went out a bit to, we submitted at least five separate contractors. We received two bids, modern construction being a low bid of 5,500. Yeah, a contingency of 10% of 5,550 per total of $61,000. As part of this, the floor itself and center of the business center where you come in and first greets you, that has to be removed as well. We thought that it's, we found that it was not more cost effective. It's actually due out to remove. Foreign contractor, RV Weiss LLC is actually on a state contract. So we asked them for price for this, 35,624 and contingency 10% for 35,624 total, 39,184 cents for both contracts.
Thank you for, actually, we were able to tour this a couple of months ago, I think Kevin and I. I understand this project is, I'm not always familiar with roof stiffening, however, how long do you think that that will preserve the roof as is once this project is undertaken?
We should take care of it. This is actually two columns that will come up in the center before us recently had to move it from center that will go up to the top of the roof and that will take in the situation dead. And then the nature center comes to come in, we have new visitor center, we do that reception area and then they're thinking of sculpture in the middle, large street to then hide the two columns.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I move your approved request from Public Works to contract two contracts, one with my construction, one with RV Weiss LLC, as described by Tiger. Got two seconds. All favor.
Aye.
Thank you, Tiger. And you, so I just pulled up Lane, our rails. Yes, part of our guide, our management improvement program, we have a switch, a two cable group post guide rail on Oak Lane that is still, we might ask companies who have seen DOT maintenance bid, the state did this work, and we see the board of 27 outs, some of the board has replaced the two cable guide rail with a bare hardware rail, given that it's in a residential area and residents look directly down on it. This guide rail affects the land trust property behind it. So the code is 17,674. She had a contingency of 15% of 4,150, the total of 324. I approve the request from Public Works, companies, LLC, for 31,844. Second, take seconds for the discussion. All favor. Okay, National Public Works Week of the town in town. You already knew this, right? I read the demo, but so it's May 16. We want to declare this National Public Works Week in town in, and people don't realize how important Public Works is to the quality of life and the beauty of our town. I want to make Tiger, entire staff of Public Works sure, everything they do, the town's looking great and it just keeps on getting better and better. So I'm happy to make motion to declare May 16th, make my second National Public Works.
I guess not every week.
Always seems like.
Yeah, while we've got you, can you just give a brief overview of the projects in town?
You got three weeks.
These are these are necessary projects for gas or water. There's a lot going on in town. Carter Street.
Nobody's talking about this. Yeah. So 123 was open, called the project as a state project. There is some shoulder work left behind.
But it's open.
It is open. Traffic, road map closed. All the roads are completely on the shoulder. Went over this morning. It's too late. Traffic becomes a little opposite on the other end. So that project's moving slowly, about another two weeks to go. West Road Bridge is open. We're open two months early. It's open Friday. So that is, that's substantially complete. There's some signage that needs to be installed on that some additional landscaping is in issue, but that is open. Ever source gas, probably by the end of the week will be out front on Main Street at night, carrying East Avenue, Locust, and then Locust down the forest. The businesses that are down there, so we can sell gas to that area. And after that, they come into the back of town hall to feed the town hall, towns, town hall, possibly by college at that point. Aquarium Waters continuing to work up Main Street and up Church Street. They'll finish hopefully by the end of the week on their times, residential times now. The fluorinated pressure treated fluoridated last week, so past muster, so now the time of all residents, at that point in time, the week, probably till getting a tune and then start a cherry main, come down, church street to Main Street, turn left on Main Street and head all the way to Locust. That's going to be about three months long or so and that will be almost entirely. There. The parking lot, maybe it's been repaid, so looks like it's a landscape reveal, some additional work there, but that should be a nice finish to that end of leaving the complex, so to speak, of sports facilities. River trees being repaid today, so that should be done by the end of today and so the landscape and valuable work. So that side line installation and reconstruction, that's a, that's a three-year process or four-year process.
That's great. Thank you.
Do we go?
You moved it. You moved it. We don't have a second.
Take second for the discussion, for the discussion. All favor. Aye. Thank you, Tiger.
Is this the first time where we actually recognize? I guess this is an annual.
Annual, yes. It's an annual, that's probably our close to our attempt.
Okay, great.
Okay, next up is. Pressure. Every guy. Women of Brian Platts, who do building official for four-year terms expire April 30.
This is Ryan Platts, who's been our chief building official for 16 years. Every four years by state statute, the board selects a lease for pull into this position. They appeared a couple of years ago and they're asking for just a couple of years until 2025.
Sounds good to me. I want you to know, if you don't, Tucker and I spoke yesterday, you have a plan. If you appoint me, if you would take probation to start your own municipality, be your competitor, put you out of business. Would you like to say anything? But I went to your reappointment. Or should I say thank you in advance? I think Ryan's doing a great job and we're pleased to appoint Ryan. I didn't realize you want to terms, Brian does. So any questions for Ryan?
An important position. Thank you.
My pleasure. I move that we appoint Brian Platts to be the town building official for another four-year term to expire April 30, 2025. Very second?
Second.
Take seconds for the discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Let's see what we get too. Get some 721s.
Bye, Brian.
Thank you, Brian. Every day. Okay, next item is another personnel matter. Following our chief administrative officer, our administrative officer.
Yes. Thank you.
Tucker has been a great addition to our staff at Town Hall. She has spent the past six months learning Town Hall or learning to get to know the staff. Her energy and her creativity has been a great asset to Town Hall and they ask that we take her off probation and we're into.
Okay, let's review this house now. Tucker is still in issues well and always surprised at how much goes on in this building around town. She's doing a great job and I'm very happy to request to be, remove her from probationary status. If we didn't remove her, we should understand what would happen.
Well, by our code, you would have had to let her know that she months ago.
So we got a lot of this. Make comments. What were you?
Just that she has her own pair of shoes and is doing very well and we all come off of probationary status and join you. Thank you for all the.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trifecta job.
Thank you.
So I move, we approve request from HR to remove Tucker Murphy from probationary status effective immediately. Second. Yes, take seconds for the discussion. All favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
Anyway, we have Caroline on.
Yes.
Hey, Caroline Garrity, our chairman of the Wavenee Park Conservancy is here today to present the proposed by plan that maybe our conservancy wants to unveil. They presented already to rec and they will go to town council and also through, I think it's worth it. But good morning, Caroline.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. As Kevin just said, my name is Caroline Garrity. I don't think I've met Kathleen before, but it's a pleasure to be here with you this morning and as the chairman of the Wavenee Park Conservancy. Thank you for having me to present our new five-year plan for our beloved Wavenee Park. Also on the call is one of my very dedicated board members, Sally Campbell, and Stephen Beschenstein, another board member and our treasurer might be joining as well. I believe I'm getting just, oh, okay. I'm sorry. I see nothing but a green phone image here on my computer. I believe it has been a year since I gave you all an update on what the Wavenee Park Conservancy has been accomplishing at the park. As I'm sure you have seen for yourselves or read about, we have had huge increases in visitors to the park this past year. And I believe this is not just because of COVID, but because we have worked for over six years to bring order and beauty to the 130 acres of open space surrounding Wavenee House. Before I begin the presentation of the five-year master plan, I just wanted to briefly talk about our ongoing projects that the board and I are diligently working on. As I hope you have visited the park since last fall, we have installed beautiful new plantings in the forecourt of Wavenee House as well as irrigation systems for the plantings and the entire front lawn. In addition, we regraded the planting beds, installed a new boxwood and white rose bed in front of the porcupine chair and replaced all the slate walkways. We will hopefully be concluding the project later this spring or early summer. Once the town finishes building the new handicap ramp on the western side of the house, we will land that area and install the new house lighting. The installation of the two LAs of trees might take until the fall as mature tree supply and transportation has been stalled by COVID. We hope you will agree that the forecourt and the house foundation plantings are a vast improvement and will be enjoyed by all who visit the park. Walking down to the Anderson Pond, which has become a focal point of the park, we will be planting beginning in late May, an enhanced plan of native shrubs, perennials, and wetland ground covers. Our plan will create more visual. Our plan will create more visual interest and color year-round and better-defined pedestrian walkways. We received a very generous gift from the Anderson Family Fund to augment the plantings, and the entire cost will be paid by the conservancy. Beyond the pond, the genium meadow was seeded with wildflowers in late fall and should be blooming this summer. The Genium Foundation has been extremely generous to us and has continued their philanthropic efforts toward making the meadow a serene environment for bird watchers, naturalists, and most importantly, the wildlife. Now for the master plan. We were thrilled to have the very talented Catherine Herman of Catherine Herman Designs, located on Elm Street in New Canaan, develop a five-year master plan of new projects for Wavine. To start with, she suggested, uh, Tucker, may we have the next slide, please? Uh, she suggested we obtain an aerial survey of Wavine Park, which had never been done before. This is a very useful tool, as one can see all the waterways, elevations, and an overhead view of the park, as you see here. Um, on the right-hand legend here, you can see the eight main projects we hope to focus on, including A, the South Avenue entrance, B, the entry drive and trail, C, the parking and utility area, D, the house and adjacent gardens, E, the outbuildings and adjacent areas, F, the meadow fields, G, the woodland trails, and H, the Lapham Road entrance. Next slide, please. The South Avenue entrance. We would like to design a new native plant, planting plan. Some examples of the shrubs and ground covers are seen in the photos here. And we would like to improve while at the same time reducing the amount of signage and add lighting and clarify and separate the modes of circulation, distinguishing the pedestrian trail in a clear way, which you can see on the left-hand photo, aerial photo. Uh, you also see an example here, uh, in the picture on the right middle of a suggested new style of signage similar to what they have at Kai Koot, the Rockefeller Estate in Tarrytown, New York. Next slide, please. The entry drive and trail. For the woodlands along the curving entry driveway, we would first remove the invasives and then transform and beautify this area with an understory of native plants, uh, as you can see in some of these photos on the lower right. This screening would also separate visitors walking on the trails from the car traffic. We would like to improve the signage along the trail and, as well, and educate visitors about native plants and the trails in the park. Next slide, please. The parking and utility area. In this parking area, which you see when you're first coming up the hill, uh, you can see the pictures at the top there. Um, there are damaged and mature trees, which we would remove and then add new mature trees and understory plantings so as to separate the parking areas. An example of this is in the lower-middle photo with the white amelacier trees. Also, we hope to redesign the dumpster area near the house and have already been in discussion with Catherine Herman and the Public Works Department about this, as it is definitely ready for improvement. Next slide, please. The house and adjacent gardens. First, there would be selective removal of mature trees and removal of the existing Japanese maples along the peony walk, along with removal of invasives behind and around the pond. For the planting design, we would add new mature trees, replant the upper and lower rear terrace plantings to match the front of the house design, add additional peonies and another perennial to the peony walk. You can see in this middle bottom picture, uh, a visualization of what we would like to do with the peony walk, where in this picture, we have the purple flowers, nepeta or cat mint. Uh, and we would also like to improve it, to design a new planting design to improve the visual connection down to the pond. We have exciting news that the New Canaan Garden Club would like to partner with us on the peony walk redesign, to be completed by the spring of 2022 in honor of Frederick Law Olmsted's 200th birthday, which will be on April 26, 2022. The national celebration is called Olmsted 200. Next slide, please. The outbuildings and adjacent landscape. This is the area around the Powerhouse Theater and the parking lot for the theater and the walled garden. Removal of existing overground plantings would occur first here, and then we would restore the plantings around the Powerhouse Theater. Also, we have already planted the restored retaining wall just below the parking lot with no mo fescue, uh, type of grass that doesn't, you know, need cutting, but we would add native pollinator plants as well. Also, the town hopes to restore the potting shed as a public restroom for park visitors, which is, um, right next to the parking lot, the, the little square building. Uh, and we would plant around this when completed, perhaps next summer is a possibility. Next slide, please. Meadows and Fields. This is the area beyond the back terrace of the house. Selective removal of mature trees and addition of new mature trees would be completed. Uh, we would like to change the mow pattern of the grass to help reinforce the major axes, as you can see in the example photo on the middle right from the Storm King Art Center in upstate New York. Incorporating new signage as seen in the photos and improving with additional benches would also, we feel, help the area. Next slide, please. The woodland trails. A strong initiative in the upcoming years would be to remove the chain link fence along the Merritt Parkway Trail and install all new native woodland plantings as seen in the middle photo here, and also possibly build a berm, which you can see in the diagram, or a planting barrier to block the noise and the visual impact of the traffic. The masonry mentioned, which includes the restoration of the stone wall along Lapham Road, will be worked on this May and June as we host four New Canaan senior high school interns for three weeks. They will spend one week working with master stone mason Greg Filacci, learning how to build these beautiful stone walls, and this is the air, area where they will be working. Also noted here is an addition of pedestrian access opposite Conrad Road off of South Avenue. Of course, more educational and direct directional signage in this woodland area, uh, would be ideal as well. Next slide, please. The Lapham Road entrance. The new, we would install a new, uh, a new planting design of native woodland plantings to match the South Avenue entrance. We would also improve signage to match the South Avenue entrance, entrance and add lighting. Next slide, please. Sculpture. We would like to include varying styles of outdoor sculpture in the park with different artists represented. One of our board members, Ariane Kolb, worked to have the large Bird's Nest sculpture a few years ago by the walled garden and is currently working on other ideas. Also, again, we want to have all of our furnishings and signage to be consistent of high quality and in keeping with the house and grounds. Next slide, please. This, in this last slide, you can see how Wavine is now part of a green links system where one can walk, run, or bike from within the park up to the Bristol Bird Sanctuary, then continue on to Me Park, Irwin Park, across to the nature center, back into town, and then back down again, South Avenue to Wavine. It would be an ambitious walk, to say the least, but it is exciting that the parks, parks are now connected. So this is a broad overview of what the conservancy board feels is the direction we want to take over the next five years. Of course, none of this would be possible without our growing list of wonderful donors and the town's support as well. Thank you for your time and for listening, and if you have any questions, I am happy to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. So Wavine Park is certainly the gem of the painters, and, um, I'm very proud of what we've done in the last five, six years, um, under Bob Soler's leadership, um, initially, and Caroline's continuing that tradition. I want to thank the entire board. I want to thank the, uh, Anderson family and the Clarkson family, Denning Foundation, for all their generosity and all the donors to the Park Conservancy. Town could not do, um, were able to do a partnership with the Conservancy in, uh, really, really beautifying Wavine Park, making it, uh, the centerpiece of the canyon, and actually has become very famous park, uh, as you know, because of COVID. So thank you, Caroline, and, um, Sally, and I'll see you over at Jonas, Steve Beschenstein, the new board.
Morning.
Morning, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions or comments?
This is, uh, it, it, it's extraordinary what's happened with the past properties. I echo Kevin's comments and thanks to the board and, and all of the funders of Conservancy. Um, I do have a couple of specific questions. The chain link fence, which we all agree is pretty ugly. I assume that's on, uh, waving property, not that something was put up on the state.
No, I, I believe that was put up by Mr. Lapham, right, Kevin? That's what you've told me, I don't know.
I would tell me that it was to keep the people from the park out, out of this farm. But it's something that Tiger's brought down their park and realized that most of the park doesn't have fencing. I like a, a safe industry highway where they have, to keep the deer off of them. So I think all the board should have arranged to take the fences.
So it's a safety issue, right? We're expecting that. And then, Tiger, you may know this, um, how many public restaurants are there in Wavine?
Steve John, too.
And don't use Steven.
Or, if you count Lapham and Wavine House.
Wavine House is open to?
It hasn't been, through COVID, it has not been.
It's not been.
Right. Hence the need for the potting shed, right? Especially during the winter.
But that's not gonna come online until 2022.
Correct. You have a design this year, and then, uh, budgetary, you have a line item for, uh, 2020, 2022, 2023, uh, reconstruction.
Yeah, and I think that's important because of the enhanced usage of, uh, Caroline, I mean, you guys have a sense of numbers in terms of, maybe Steve, additional usage because of COVID, of what you're having. I just remember being up there on people's table last year in warm.
Yeah, the parking lots are pretty full every weekend, and.
I just want to add my thanks, Caroline, and to the board, and to all the donors, and to the work that you do with, uh, our Public Works Department. I think that, that collaboration really, really makes a big difference, and so thank you so much for what you're doing. As you look ahead at the five-year plan, and, and thank you for taking us through all the details there. This, what is the, of all those, I think, five or six projects, is there one specifically, specifically that you're focusing on for, say, the upcoming six months?
Um, well, we want to get that pond, the, the pond planted, and then, I don't know, I think the board has to decide. Uh, we, we definitely want to, along with Public Works, uh, change all the dumpster area, and then that is linked to the peony walk area. So I think that would probably be our next focus, but the board hasn't really decided yet what, what we're going to take on first.
What's the thing about the dumpster area, which, which I think we all acknowledge is kind of lovely, but I mean, is there a major shift in that, or I mean, you have to have dumpsters, dumpsters somewhere?
Well, we're going to, I, I mean, I think, you know, maybe Tiger wants to speak to this more, but we'd like to build a brick wall that would hide the dumpsters behind it and get rid of the plastic fencing and, uh, just beautify that whole area, restore the gate that where you come into the peony walk. And, um, so.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks again, Caroline. I think one version of your presentation was, uh, thank Catherine, Catherine Herman.
Catherine Herman, yes.
Great work in putting this plan together, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and for all you do.
Thank you for listening, and, um, I'll be back soon, I'm sure.
Thank you.
Thank you.
For our. Jennifer, we have item number twelve with Steve Nekko presenting our summer employees for the parks and recreation area.
Good morning.
Good morning, Steve.
How are you? Uh, yes, we, we are, have a list, list of, uh, eighty-five, uh, part-time employees for, that we hire for our summer staff, uh, on a yearly basis. Uh, these will be, uh, tennis court attendants, uh, lifeguards, uh, camp counselors, camp, camp supervisors, uh, the aquatic supervisors for, for the pool in Kiwanis. Uh, so we've, we've got a, a big, big staff. We're looking forward to a, a good, good summer, uh, as the COVID conditions change and we can get back to more normal, some sense of normal programming, uh, but we've got a big staff and, uh, we're gearing up and getting ready for the summer season, so I need you guys to, need to ask for your approval for the, uh, summer staff for this year.
Steve, what's the situation with Kiwanis?
We're, we, the, well, we, we're, we're working on it. The, the pond has been drained down, and Public Works will be coming in probably later, later part of this week to, uh, to, to clear the pond area and distribute new sand and refill it. Uh, we, we have plans of being open, the, the Y will have their camp there. We plan on bringing our campers down there. Um, the daycare center will bring their, their children down for swimming two or three days a week. Uh, we plan on staffing the park and having it open, uh, so we're trying to do some other activities. So hopefully we can, uh, we can have two other events, uh, at Kiwanis this summer and, uh, make it, make it, make it an enjoyable summer.
So it'll be fully staffed as in prior years, Matt?
Well, we'll have, we'll have our lifeguard staff on duty, we'll be, we'll have the park open daily Monday through Friday from, uh, ten AM to, to seven PM, and weekends from eleven AM to six PM. So we'll have a full lifeguard staff there.
Okay, I think just add, I have an expression, so does this represent maybe the, the number of summer employees that we had, say, two years ago, for 2019?
It's probably, it's probably pretty close to what we had 2019, yes.
Thank you.
And will, will someone be monitoring the usage of, of the park?
We, we do have, we do have a, a gate attendant at Kiwanis and gate attendant at the pool, and they check people in and they keep a record. We have a daily record of all the attendants.
Thank you. Uh, I move, we approve the question from, uh, the Recreation Director, approve the list of, is there, uh, that was for the summer staff, for a second?
Second.
Take seconds, uh, discussion. All favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Item number thirteen, there's, uh, the end of all of tax overpayments. Uh, cameras, any questions? Prove the, uh, refunds and tax overpayments.
Second year.
Discussion.
Sorry, there's a quick question, so. So we've been looking at this, uh, every meeting, I'm just wondering, maybe periodically, if that's ever going to come in and, and speak to, just what should we expect from you?
Well, you know, a lot of these are due to the fact that mortgage companies, they have a claim this year.
So they overpay, they sold this house, sold.
Yeah, we have, we have. We can enjoy, uh, from the income, updates.
Okay.
Did we go?
Yes, well, quickly, and maybe you should do it again.
I'll shake her eye.
Contracts under, only two contracts under, under $10,000. Any question? First, no matter.
Do you want to do select comments, Kevin, and then go?
Oh, yeah, we're going to do the select comments, because we're going to, so. I was just saying, as I know, last night on the call, um, we're doing very well locally. Uh, it doesn't mean we're out of the woods, but we're, um, just surprising. The canyon and most of our citizens, however, still red as they find incidents of COVID in, in, you know. of COVID in the community. But as I said, we see the light from the tunnel, we administer the most of the last 10 hours of vaccination, like this week. Almost, almost 100% of our 3,000 seniors, over 65, are vaccinated, and we're doing very well, we've got low ages. Just announced, expect to have the advisor approved, probably next week for 12, 15-year-olds. That'll be good, because we have a lot of Pfizer left over. Last week, the high school clinic didn't really take up as much as we expected. So we're doing good on the COVID front. As you can see, we're opening up Town Hall, we're going to anticipate further expansion of our government, executive orders coming along on May 19. And we're going to have meetings after noon, 5:00, 7:00, 8:00, 9:00, which I expect we're going to have. Side-reading work for another couple weeks. We need to start planning now. And I want to mention the parking commission is going to be Thursday night. We set out a commuter permit survey, a survey last week to commuter parking permit holders, asked them how they felt about renewing their permits, and the results, not surprisingly, indicated that substantial portion of people are unsure when they are charged to. Therefore, the discussion we have, the parking commission will debate this Thursday night, should we renew on July 1st, or should we defer to September 1st? This process is a little bit hard, but it might be great to do. I say you would be now, but I think that's all, have any comments?
Just a question, have the storage of that, or do you think responsibility is stored?
Yes.
Sure.
Yeah, we have, we have the freezer, I think we're the only local public health department to buy it, so we're very lucky to, to have a positive that we have the freezer.
Great, great. And then on the parking, is there, and I know it's legally discussed with the parking commission, but is there a choice perhaps that those who are actually beginning to commute, they may want to start July 1st, they can, but those who are not starting until later?
No, we got to consider that, the idea of, it's possible, I think 60% of the people would renew, but.
Sure.
A lot of the comments we received, we see somehow people saying, well, I'm going to renew, but I'm not sure I'm going to get the money, so they don't really know their plan yet, they don't want, but we, parking commission is going to consider policy to, a lot of people are reinstated, they give it up for two years, they'll be on a prayer waitlist, and it's not a waitlist, prayer list, back to take their slots in the lower yard or wherever they may have been.
And do you want to mention the schedule issue that a lot of them commented on?
You know, the train schedule is a problem, basically, the branch line schedule is not what it used to be. I don't know if that's going to be reinstated, we have many compliance relationships relied on the main lines, depending by the area and program, the parking park. So I think that's, you know, in fairness to people, we don't want to be charged with something that I could use in the months of July and August, and so moving that decision, probably going back here two weeks to decide on selection. It's not recommendation.
And then the only other thing is the farmer's market, I believe, is the Saturday, it starts at, what, 10?
10. Yep, 10 to.
So that'll be our first trial of the new location, exciting.
Sure.
Okay, listen, any comments?
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to go into executive session at 9:25, and the motions are going to executive session. So, so the person of evidence, second. And.
Aye.
We would ask. I think 32, back in the call session, and we have one that is voted on, discussing executive session. This was a matter of, under the donated sick leave policy approved in July 2019, there are two employees that the union has arranged for other employees to go sick time to cover their need for sick leave. I move, we approve it, so, very interesting stat. Discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
At the desk, I would take a moment to start. Someone, thank you. I'll verify. Thank you. Okay. Yes.